All right, all right, this is the Sherburne zoning board of appeals. It's a little after six on June 10th, 2021. I'm Rick Novak and the chair, other members are Jonathan Fitch, Ron Stefanic, we're all here. And the purpose of tonight's hearing is the not hearing, perfect of tonight's meeting is the continued discussion of the decision on application for special permit for the Coolidge Crossing project. We, we had tentatively voted last time to grant it with conditions and we'd sent ourselves away with the homework of each coming back with lists of what we thought condition should be in there. And meanwhile, Ms. Kiefer representing the applicant had, had not only submitted an initial draft of the decision, but she sent over to Jeannie earlier today. Excuse me, a revised draft in which she tried to incorporate as well as she could some of our local oddities that were in the 59 North Main Street decision, so. Without further ado, Jonathan, if you have a list of conditions you think we ought to be running through, I'd be glad to have you start. I've got my own list here. I got up to 13. Ron, you may have some, but what do you have, board members?
You're 13 ahead of me, Rick. I don't, I don't have any to add.
Well, mine, mine may not be in there or mine may be in there. I mean, I'm hoping Stephanie will say, oh, Rick, that's on page 12. Or Rick, that's on page 13, or that's in the revised plans.
Well, I did, I did read all 27 pages carefully this afternoon. There's a typo or two, but it seemed very comprehensive to me. I didn't think of anything that was, that was missing, frankly.
Great. Well, you obviously got to spend a lot more time with it than I did. Because I'm not saying my 13 items aren't in here. I'm just saying I didn't have time to go track them down inside.
Okay.
So do not, do not misunderstand me. Ron, do you want to, do you have any that you want to raise, or shall I just hit her with my list of 13 and?
No, you just go ahead with your 13. I'm I really don't have much.
Okay, all right, Stephanie, so educate me, please. Where does it say, and again, because I was spending some time on my notes, I didn't spend much time in your draft, so I'm not trying to be coy or cute here. Where does it say your water and sewer has to come from Natick and public only?
That is, give me a moment here, because I have to get on my way through it. Unfortunately, I don't have it up on my computer, so I can't do like a word search on it real fast.
Well, Mr. Fitch knows it very well, too, so he can, he can race you.
That's what I'm doing. God's got like.
I, I think on page six, number 15.
Okay.
Might be another spot.
Okay, but those are factual findings, not conditions. Right now, you know, this, this is a working session. We're all just trying to get it right. Okay, well, for now, I'm just going to put that on my list that we've got to put it in here somewhere. And I think it's all agreed that this project has to have public water and sewer or it can't go ahead. What about my number 2 on my list was that the access could only be from Coolidge, except there had to be an emergency access out the back. Is the answer to that one that, that it's on the revised plans?
It is on the revised plans and it also though is.
Included in here.
Yes, included. I think it's within the general conditions, perhaps, I mean.
General conditions at the end, let's. Well, let's again, put that on the list of.
I, I think it's, I think it starts under the, what's now G, so the traffic, traffic safety conditions, side rocks. And so G, G1 and G2, so G1 is access and egress to the project shall be via Coolidge Street, consistent with the approved plans. And condition G2 is emergency access to the rear building three shall be used, shall be for use by emergency vehicles. So shall be, shall be for use only by emergency vehicles and shall be gated and secured during construction of the project. A temporary gate at the juncture of the emergency access drive and the abiding property shall be installed prior to commitment of construction.
And there's supposed to be a pedestrian walk around up there, too. Is that in here?
I, I think we just left that on the plans. Double check if you.
It is on the plans.
It's on the plan.
Yeah, it's definitely on the plan. If you need something also on here, we can.
Let me take a look. We just, we needed to be clear. I don't think we need to say everything 10 times.
Okay.
All right, what about that blast, any blasting that you have to do has to be in accordance with those board of health guidelines they gave us?
Yes, we have that in there.
That's on page 21. F.
F7, good. Sounds like bingo, doesn't it? Okay. The, the water tap. You have, you have a soft obligation to request a water tap at where the water line crosses Coolidge. Where is that?
We'd already discussed that in our last meeting and Pulte said they, assuming they get approvals for their permit, he would agree to do that.
Right, and I think our, our, our ask of you was that you would cooperate with them and ask them to do it. A, a soft obligation of that nature as opposed to if they don't do it.
I, I think we've already done that. Do you want that in writing that we've done that?
I, I think, I think it ought to be, ought to be in here.
Okay, I, I don't think actually we have it in here, but we can, that the applicant will reach out to Pulte.
Requesting cooperate, that's, that's all we're looking for.
Maybe in section H.
That's a very good place right now, isn't it?
Yeah. So we'll put that in at H7.
Great, new H7. No work until general chemical phase one is done.
We had drafted it that no work until October 1, I believe. So let me find where that is.
On page 14, the bottom.
See. We'll know this document provided. Thank you. Page 14, bottom.
Yeah, it's, it's CC. C1, C, and then continues on to page 15.
Got it, okay. One page.
I, I thought that we had discussed that there wouldn't be any contingency with respect to the general chemical cleanup.
So.
Glad, glad Stephanie.
I was just gonna say, so how we had proposed doing it without discussion of general chemical, but we agreed to the general timeframe. So the last clause, if you will, is that, or the last sentence, excuse me, is in no event shall construction for the project commence prior to October 2021, so. We weren't tying it in necessarily to general chemical, but it does fit into their, their this phase of work that they are commencing, I think, this month, because that was to be concluded by September. So we had agreed that we would wait until October 2021 before we commence any work, so.
That's what I recall.
Okay, great. All right, moving along, Tetra Tech made a bunch of recommendations along the way on traffic. I think those all got integrated into the plans, didn't they?
I believe they did.
Yeah, I think, I think they did. We'll loop back. All right, Jonathan, help me out. Where do we wind up on impervious cover? There were various requests from various boards and interested parties about not doing certain types of impervious cover, and I believe the applicant pushed back and said, we can do what's shown in our plans, but we're not going to have permeable pavement.
Yes, and app can explain that the pervious material is very expensive, but in any event, not appropriate to this site because.
And not as durable.
Not as durable and, and difficulty control, controlling the water flow.
Okay, and so turning to the applicant team, what you have agreed to do is show, is what's shown on your plans and specifications.
Which is reduce the area of the impervious cover.
Right, okay.
There is language in here about the amount of pervious and impervious material.
And where is that, Jonathan? Please guide me. Sorry, an important question.
I, I just read it, that's all.
I will say that our current plans do show the reduced paving area.
On page six, there's some discussion in 13 and 17, and that's kind of in the general findings.
Right, that's the.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Fitch, does, does item 13 on page six, refresh your recollection? So what you thought you saw?
So I'm getting there. No, I'm sorry, page six.
Item 13.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Including the reduction to impervious surfaces by reduced parking space footprint as described in the civil design group memo April 23.
Yes, but there's other language in here. That's not.
That is, that is something, but it's not what you were recalling. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I will. There were some percentage.
Item 17. How about that, Jonathan? That the one?
That's that might be it, but you know what? I think there's another.
Okay. I don't mind if it's here five times. I just want to make sure it's not, it's not, it's a number higher than zero.
I, I'm doing a word search as we're going, and there is the only other mention of the word impervious in the documents under E11 on page 19. But it's really talking about the soils and bedrock.
Okay. All right. Board members, I, I think 13 and 17 adequately addressed my question. Unless you disagree.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, and then there were requirements for the lighting plans and pole heights. I believe that's on the lighting plan that was circulated April 1, and that's referred to on page 22. Is that right, Ms. Kiefer?
On page 22, we have the, let's see if you have the right page here, would be.
21, F8.
I was looking at F17, but, oh yes, okay, F8 and F17.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, there, there's two in there, yeah, so eight and 17, yeah.
Okay. I remember seeing something from Tetra Tech about a cut and fill analysis would be more site grading. Is that the correct way to look at that is being included in the plans? I know there was a revised plans.
Yes, the existing grades and the proposed grades.
Mr. Leader, I see you nodding. Is that a yes?
Well, the, yes, the, the plans include, as Roy just said, the existing and proposed grades. So to the extent that a grading analysis is required, it's, that's in the plan.
Okay. Snow storage, fertilizers, pesticides. They'll probably be in your stormwater.
Did you say stormwater? Is that what you said?
Yeah, or, 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 or maybe it was, maybe it was in your, your.
Pesticides is mentioned on F16 on page 22.
This is very helpful, by the way, thank you.
And snow is on F, or is F15, and it references the MASTY snow disposal guidance.
Board members, help, help me out on what the discussion was on snow. I think certain residents wanted all the snow stored inside or something like that, and the applicant said, look, we can do it in accordance with DEP, but we can't, we can't build snowsheds. Is that your recollection wrong, Mr. Design?
All right, you said, did you say snowsheds?
Right, that they wanted, that didn't, didn't somebody want indoor storage?
Never heard of that.
That's for the salt.
I don't recall hearing that, and I never heard of it either.
What I, what I recall is that there were limited alternatives, given the amount of parking and other elements of the, the site design and the they I think we're planning on putting this, the snow. I don't know.
I, I remember seeing on the plans, various places that they were going to try to put it that, you know, it, it's a tight site because of, of, of everything that's going on there. There, there wasn't a lot of extra space, but they were trying to put it away from the, from the wetland areas and the sensor areas. I see Ron nodding. So should, should we rely on the plans for that one?
Typically, we, they would show up somewhere in the plans, that, you know, the, the areas of snow storage.
Okay, so while, while we move on to the next one, Matt Leader, since you know the plans probably better than any of us, would you just take a quick look and then, then tell us? Thank you.
Will do.
Okay. The wildlife corridors and wildlife crossings, that was a late one at the table. I believe there were two areas that were agreed upon by the applicant. They weren't everything that everybody from the, from the other boards and, and the town wanted. Where do those show up here?
That's mentioned.
Okay.
Can I ask a point of order?
Sorry?
I just want to know about your process of when you bring, go through a topic like snow or pesticides, herbicides, are you gonna? You don't say what actually is resolved versus if I have a question, if somebody would submit it, a specific comment for the hearing, can I ask you what it is you used? How do I even know what's been done?
The, the hearing is over. But I just. You can certainly, but please, please let me finish. You can certainly, if you think we are making a mistake here and did not put in something that was agreed upon, you can certainly either raise that with us or you, or can certainly email, email to us. But this is not a public participation session where people can say, wait, I think you should be saying tomato instead of tomato.
But you, when you go through snow as an example, the snow issue that was raised was what was used for the de-icing. And I don't know whether that's included or not included, because you don't say actually what you have, you just say is snow there. And, and I can't, so it's, I can't figure out how to contribute.
We, we got, we got the draft decision today. It's being posted online. It's not being. Okay, yeah, you know, and I think Jeannie is doing it now. But my point is, we're not going to finalize it and sign it tonight. This is a working session, so if you, if you, if you notice tomorrow morning that we completely booted the issue of de-icing, then you can say, you could certainly email us and say, wait a second, at the hearing on XYZ, it was specifically agreed that the, the icing would be handled X, D, X, Y, and that isn't what the decision says.
Okay, fine, that makes sense, okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's a note on the wildlife on page six, number 14.
Thank you, official searcher of numbers, dates, words. Page 14.
Page six, item 14.
Page six, item 14, thank you.
And it references back to the plans.
Got it, there it is, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Storage and, and minimal use of fertilizers and pesticides, where does that show up?
Pesticides is found on F16 on page 22.
On this foot there, thank you very much. Right. Right, and that text is, to my recollection, board members, consistent with what we discussed.
Yes.
There's also a reference to fertilizer on page 16D2.
On page 16, D for dog, too?
Yes. Pages may slightly differ, if you're looking at the red line or the black and white.
Right, that's the top seven, keep in mind, thank you. Yep, yep, that's Ron and, and Jonathan, I think D2 is consistent with what we discussed.
Yeah.
All right, and then there were supposed to be intermittent marker posts along the no alterations zone. Where does that show up?
I know it's on the plans. I don't know if it's in the document.
Yeah, I think that it's just on the plans. If you need it in the document, we can include that, but I think it's just on the plans.
That was, that was important to the cons comm, so let's add, add it to the, to the text, just so in case someone's reading it later and doesn't read the plans, they know it was not forgotten.
That's fine.
Ron, one of my notes has to do with landscape planting plans, but I believe so long as they use the April 28 plan that was approved by Tetra Tech, you were happy.
Yep.
Okay. And Stephanie, you are going to include in the wetlands a statement that the rulings her, here were without prejudice to the cons comm did under the state.
Yeah, I think you can look under.
Page 14.
Right, C, C1, part B. That the applicants to obtain an order of conditions from the commission or department pursuant to their project.
Right, but I thought it was supposed to be a qualifier to our waivers, that we're waiving various local regulations. But that was without prejudice to their rights under the state statute. You recall that? I do.
It, um, it somewhat goes without saying, obviously, just because it's, it's the order of conditions under the state act is, is, is not waivable by the board. I don't have.
Right, 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 but, but, but I think when we were having some, some back and forth discussion with the cons comm, I think you'd said. If it would help, we will include a statement that it's without prejudice to their rights.
Right, so if you go to page 25, under I, wetlands environmental conditions, so the applicant proposes work within the 100-foot buffer, the applicant shall be required to obtain an order of conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act from the Sherburne Conservation Commission or superseding order from the DEP to offer.
All right, so we could just add in something like the, the waivers that the local regulations are without prejudice to.
Oh, you want, okay, okay, sure.
We, we said we would, so it certainly, it certainly doesn't hurt you. It's a little bit like chicken soup in this case.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's right. It's not saying anything that's not understood and exactly, it's good for us, so.
Right.
So I'll just include it right within that, that paragraph, if that's okay.
All right. And your waiver list will be the ones you gave us on May 10th, right?
Yes, just a quick question on that. So at the hearing before that you had asked us in our May 10th, the middle, or our one that we submitted prior to, to include a justification, I don't know if you want like that column just deleted out for the justification and just to have it cleaner, or we can do whatever the board wants.
Well, if, if, if it if it doesn't do, well, if it fits on the page, I'd say included, but if there's a, if there's a reason why you want to exclude it, I'm perfectly open minded to hearing why.
And that's certain, that it, it really matters. When, when it was included on the page, the page went sideways, though, so I had to change the orientation.
Landscape, right. Board members, how do you feel about this? Having the justifications on the page, I actually kind of like it, even if it means some of the pages have to be landscape. I see high excitement on this issue from both of you.
I don't have a strong opinion.
I can't say that I have a preference, Rick.
Ms. Kiefer?
More elegant.
We'll do it your way.
Well, I was gonna say, the other thing is it, it I don't know how the board feels about like, because it's a, a short curse read, it may not entail everything that we had discussed in the public hearing, to have that later used against the board as a justification for precedence for other things, so I don't know if that's a concern of the board.
Well, Mr. Fitch is the litigator and I am not, but been around long enough to know that whatever you said. been around long enough to know that whatever you say gets held against you, whatever you don't say, that gets held against you too, so. Because there's, there's, there's no way to witness this, as, as being on the other side of, of the trial. All right, let me just look through a few more. Ms. Kiefer doesn't say in here that you, not only that you have to comply with applicable state and federal regulations, but you can't have a CO until you do?
It, it does. We find it.
We'll be with them. If you search for federal, that may pop it up. That was just a guess, not a guarantee.
I mean, under C two E on page sixteen, the mention of obtain and file with the building commissioner, copy of all required federal, state, regional permits, approvals required to begin construction of the project.
You said C two.
Sorry, C two E. Page sixteen is the one I'm looking at.
That's the one.
But we're happy to move that to COC as opposed to building permit.
Yeah, that, and, and you may wish to do that.
Yeah.
It's actually under E seven as well on page eighteen, E seven, C.
Because you might be telescoping that process a little bit and be building while wrapping up some, some permits.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, actually, um, why don't we just take it out where it was previously? And then E seven, C, that, that Todd referenced, that was basically taken from your fifty-nine North Main decision. So it's, it's already the language that town council approved, so.
Okay. Let's try it there.
Okay, so what was that prior number, Todd, so I can do a straight through to remove it?
It was previously
C.
C one E, yeah, sorry, C two E.
Right, okay.
Sixteen.
All right, Mr. Finch, I think I've now caught up with you. And, and was it your position, Jonathan, that subject to whatever little tweaks we might have done in the last few minutes, you were otherwise relatively happy with this?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stefan, what were your feelings about it?
Uh, where we are?
Right.
Well, I'm gonna need more time to go through the document.
Right, right. I'm, I'm not planning to, I'm not planning to vote it tonight. I'm just more trying to get a sense of, are there other things that, that
There's nothing.
raised that we didn't.
There's nothing that comes to mind, but it may with a more thorough review of the document.
Right, and, and that's one of the reasons why we're posting it is so that Michael Lesser and others can read it and say, wait, you forgot X. And X was clearly agreed to at, you know, on March tenth or whatever. Okay, well then. Rest of our record, we need to be done with it. If, well, let's see, when, when we closed the last hearing, was that at the the seventh? No.
Twelfth.
Well, I think the twelfth was the last hearing. Yes, it was. Okay, so forty days from the twelfth would be June eleven plus ten days, June twenty-one. So if we have one more short hearing next week, we should be able to finalize this within the timeframe. So again, and this isn't a motion, but I'm just suggesting this to, 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 to you two fellows, that we ask Ms. Kiefer to recirculate a further markup. Send it to Genie, have Genie post it right away. We won't have voted anything. It's a working draft, send it to town council, that hopefully, next time, we can, with any further, further edits that we agree to, you direct me to sign it. That's my sort of plan from here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just reiterate what my notes are, just so I'm clear?
Please.
Okay, so I think that I will include a condition relative to the intermittent markings for the boundary, so that, to add language that there's no waiver of the commission's authority under the Wetlands Protection Act, that the, the local waivers don't, don't prejudice their authority under the act. And then add the, as you said, the, the soft request for the applicant to speak to Pulte relative to the, the water.
Cooperate.
Cooperate. And then I will remove the duplicative about providing assurance that it's complied with state and federal, because that's already in prior to sort of occupancy, so I'll just remove that one reference there.
Right, and, and you'll also put in the narrative, I think, that, that the pedestrian walk around on the gated access is shown on the plans.
Right. So add to narrative, okay.
Got that.
Stephanie, we also have the marker posts as well.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I said, maybe I didn't say it very clearly.
Yeah. Yeah.
So four adds, one remove.
I'm sorry?
Four adds, one remove.
I wasn't tying them up, but you could be right. Let's see. That was in there. That was in there, that was in there. Yes, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that, that's the, that's the discussion on the working draft. We haven't finalized anything to the extent that anybody, board member, member of the public sees something that is wrong from the, Michael, I'm gonna ask you to write it afterwards. I, this is, this, this is not supposed to be an interactive.
Well, I just wanted to make sure the plans are available online, because there's a date of a plan.
You'll, you'll, you'll have to talk with, with, with Genie about that.
Okay.
We, 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 we believe they are. Okay.
One.
Yes, go ahead, John.
Typo. Page ten, A eighteen, I think, the requirements should be requirement. And there was there was a formatting problem. Oh, one of these.
Yeah, there's a formatting problem near the end. It, it kind of came when I was trying to incorporate the fifty-nine North Main, and it, it kind of screwed everything up, so I do apologize for it. I'll I'll work on that for the next, the middle, yeah.
Okay, well, that's.
MS Word strikes again.
Yeah, whoever invented MS Word is a special place in hell reserved for that person.
So you're saying I ought to give up on seeing WordPerfect five point O again, John?
All the days. Elegance.
We're showing, we're showing our, our seniority. Okay. Applicant team, is there something you think we've left out? Obviously, you're not a stop from raising it between now and next time either. Matt, you were gonna look up something on one of the plans for us. What was it?
The snow.
The snow, and where is it?
Okay, so it's, it's not on the plans. The way that was addressed with the peer review and our responses was that the Tetra Tech's letter of April twenty-ninth, let me just pull it up here, said, so this is Tetra Tech, it says, we support conditions that define snow removal responsibilities and expectations. However, it's preferable for snow being stored in areas that flow to the stormwater management system as often as possible to provide the benefit of treatment. We recommend the board incorporate a condition requiring the project to comply with then-current Maskey EP snow disposal guidance. A copy of the current guidance is attached for reference. And so and then in the, Ms. Kiefer's follow-up letter to that, in which that Tetra Tech letter was addressed, it, it did acknowledge that that suggestion by Tetra Tech, and then in the draft permit, the language in there goes back to that Tetra Tech recommendation, which is to comply with the then-current DEP snow disposal guidance.
And there it is in page twenty-two, right?
Yes.
Got it, okay. An excellent answer, Mr. Leader, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Jonathan and Ron, I, I'd be inclined to set a, a, a short date for a short meeting to wrap this up.
Hey.
Did that, did that work for you?
Yes. Yeah. I suggest June seventeenth, Thursday, June seventeenth, at six o'clock. Ron, did that work for you?
Uh, yes. Six o'clock.
How'd the pizza turn out?
I'd love to show it to you, but you've got a five-year-old and a three-year-old making it.
Sounds awesome, all right. I, I, I move that we continue the, 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 the discussion of the, of the comprehensive permit for including crossing to Thursday night, June seventeen, seven PM.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay.
Whoop, somebody, somebody's, somebody's not muted. Okay. Now, a, a complicating factor, I don't have guidance yet from town council or the selectmen as to whether two of us have to be in person somewhere. And so we'll have to, we'll, we'll have to comply in accordance with then-applicable rules. Stephanie, you know better than I do, but I have not heard from any of my people watching Beacon Hill that there's been an extension of the Zoom rules.
I don't think that there has.
Yeah, so, so that's still my motion, Thursday, June seven, at seven PM. By hook or by girdle. But in compliance with law. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? No, all right, all in favor, I, roll call, Novak votes aye.
Epic, aye.
Pitch aye.
All right, so we're continued until that time. Let's, let's hope that's a nice, short meeting. But whatever comes up, comes up, and we'll, 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 we'll face the, face it at the time. Any further business before us tonight, gentlemen? I don't have anything. Oh. I think we have to vote to hold a meeting on the, Genie, you're still there on the twenty-eighth? A regular meeting?
It, it's the twenty-eighth.
All right. All in favor of meeting on the twenty-eighth for a regular ZBA session on, now it's twenty-four North Main, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, Novak, aye.
Perfect, aye.
Pitch aye.
All right. So, so we've done that. Genie, do we owe you anything else in terms of votes?
That's it, thank you.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to, to adjourn then. And this time, I'll even hang around for the vote.
Move, I, I so moved to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, Novak, aye.
Epic, aye.
Pitch aye.
All right, everybody, thank you for your help, especially you, Ms. Kiefer. And we will see everybody on the night of the seventeenth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.